There are no objections. I'd like to call the meeting of the Finance Committee to order. Counselor Allen is, I don't believe, available. He's in Ireland. Send his apologies. We'll try to get in if he can. Thank you, everybody, for attending. He's going to try, but he asked me to chair the meeting, just in case he couldn't get back. So I beg everybody's patience with me. Typically, trading revenues. Mr. Burns, would you like to start with our... Well, actually, did we do our public portions? Is usually any comment or just we do should dig in? Okay, Mr. Burns, would you like to start with public orders?
Certainly. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Tonight, I'll be presenting the January revenue versus expenditure report. Something unusual happened in the month of January. We normally receive our state aid on the last business day of the month. And unfortunately, that payment did not come in until Friday, February 2nd. So the report tonight does not include that revenue. That would be booked as February revenue. And that's approximately thirty-seven point four million dollars. Thankfully, our February revenue did come in on the twenty-ninth, so I'm just hoping this was a one-off time where the state was a little late with the payment.
Any questions?
Well, I'd like to follow up on that. So this is... Has this happened before, the state being late? That must impact a lot on how they can come in.
Normally, the only time I've seen it is in June, on June thirtieth. It's late, which is extremely problematic, because then all of the revenue comes in in the new fiscal year, so you have to accrue it back to the prior fiscal year. But my understanding is a... The longtime employee handles the state's distributions, just recently retired. And they're trying to fill that position, so I'm hoping that that position has been filled and we won't run into this again.
So it really wasn't that the state didn't have the payment. It was a different kind of issue?
Correct. It wasn't a delay because funds weren't available. I think it was just a matter of them not being distributed timely. I know another community, I talked to their treasurer, and they actually received a check for their payment, which is something that we haven't received here in probably fifteen or twenty years. It's always a wire transfer.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, the next item, somebody's here to speak on the firefighter safety equipment grant. Forty-nine thousand, forty-nine million nine, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. No, yeah, some forty-nine thousand.
I don't think anyone... Is anyone from Fire Year? I don't think so. So the fire department has a grant for equipment. They plan on using it for forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and they plan on using it for a hundred and eighty-four bailout belts and fifty-eight bailout kits. And they have to use the grant funds expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions? Someone here to speak on item number three, Workplace Safety and Educational Grant.
Good afternoon, councilors. Chris Signoli, DPW Director. This is six thousand dollar grant to the DPW. It's two, three, three thousand dollar pots. One is for defensive driving courses, and the other one is for slip, slip and fall training with regard to workplace. And it's a grant coming through the State Office of Labor and Workplace Safety.
Welcome back, Chris. We missed you.
I'm not back yet, but...
We still miss you. Okay, sit up here. Next item is number four. Fire also hazardous materials grant.
It's a five thousand dollar hazardous materials grant, and it will be used for software. And it'll benefit vulnerable population by providing Springfield Fire Department members with more adequate training, which will in turn improve the department's response to hazmat-related issues.
All right, any questions?
If I may, counselor?
Please.
Thank you. The hazmat thing, does that... Does it mention anywhere mold? Or you don't know?
It doesn't get specifically into mold, counselor, but I can follow up with the fire department on that.
Okay, yeah, because we had a presentation the other day, and I think it's something that we just need to keep on our radar. Thank you so much.
Item number five, Springfield Library donation.
It's a hundred dollar donation to the Springfield Libraries, to the Sixteen Acres Branch in honor of Patricia. And I'm not even gonna try to say her last name. Ben, you... Oh, okay, I don't know how to say her last name.
It's okay. We appreciate the grant either way. We mean no disrespect by the pronunciation. Thank you.
It's a hundred dollar grant for the Sixteen Acres Branch Library.
Okay. Any questions? Item number six is an order authorizing expenditure chapter ninety funds in remodel, three million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fourteen cents.
Good evening, councilors. Chris Signoli again. This is our annual allotment from the state for our Chapter Ninety program. It's about twenty-two thousand dollars or so less than it was last year, based upon the formulas that they've done, but they did two hundred million statewide. We have a paving program that is going out to bid this year that has this. We're using two point five million dollars of this, and we have a two point five million dollar bond. So our paving that we are going to be advertising this year is for about five million. And on the list that I provided to the council, that gets us about five point eight miles of paving. Our paving program last year was almost nine million with various bonds that we had. So the money that we're getting from the state isn't going as far as it used to. So we will be putting that project out to bid sometime in the next few weeks for action after July first.
Any questions? We've already missed Chapter Ninety funding.
Yeah, Melvin?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, Catering. How are you? Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Melvin, for running the meeting for me. Chris, I know I don't want to get into a street-by-street thing, but are there any major thoroughfares that are going to get paved? You could just mention them without going into ward by ward.
Sure. We're doing for the arterials Berkshire Ave, Dwight Road, finishing up the section of Dwight Road that's up by Franconia Golf Course. We didn't do that section. Chestnut Street, Parker Street from Wilbraham Road to Cooley, which is not in great shape. And Roosevelt Avenue, from, basically from where it ties into South Branch Parkway to the Island Pond intersection. And then one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven residential streets. There's one more location that we're doing. We need some geotechnical work, and that's the intersection of Page Boulevard and Cadwell. That's just kind of in bad rutted condition. It's not on our list. It will be once we have all of the information from the geotechnical engineer. But we're basically just kind of redoing that intersection. It's just in lousy shape.
Could you just explain what geotechnical is?
Yeah, the, the location there was done over about seven, eight years ago by the state. And all of the approaches are just really, really rutted, more so from the heavy vehicles that are coming in and out of the industrial park area and polymer painting as well. So what we're trying to find out from the geotechnical is how much we need to mill there and what type of material we need to put back, because I think what the state put their stuff in about seven, eight, nine years ago, it just doesn't hold up to the amount of traffic, especially the heavy traffic that's there.
Okay, great. Thanks for that info. Thank you. How's that, Melvin?
Actually, one of our guests asked about Worthington Street. It's considered a major core street, so it's not listed, correct?
Which one was that? I'm sorry, Melvin?
The question was, was Worthington Street on that list?
Worthington Street is not on the list.
Thank you. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about dogs barking. Chris, good to see you. The Chestnut Street over by Bay State, right near the On the Pats. Did I... Was that all you learned, or did I miss it completely?
I'm sorry, Counselor. I lost you for a second.
Chestnut Street, right on the, by the... Well, you got on the highway there on Ninety-One North.
Yeah, this is actually the piece of Chestnut Street that's up by past Springfield Hospital that ties into Main Street down by all of the medical facilities. There, it's about, it's only about a thousand or so feet. But that section was not done by the state a number of years ago when they did Main Street. So it's that section of Chestnut that's by the ramps and where it ties into Springfield Street in that area.
Sorry, does that belong to us or the state?
No, that belongs to us. When the state, the state did Main Street over, there was a section there that they were going to pave, and they pulled it out late in the project about two, three years ago because they ran out of money.
Right, right. I will strongly urge you to look at that, because that, that really needs to be done. It's getting worse. I drove by the other day, and it was just like, holy my God. Yeah, I know it's a very traffic area, but I urge you to to see how we can get done this year.
Yep.
Because it definitely, I know, it's like, you know, so much competition and so much limited resources, but I would strongly urge you to look at that and see if we can get it fixed this year.
Thank you. No problem.
Thank you, Chris. Good to see you again, by the way.
Thank you.
Maria Perez?
Yeah.
Counselor Perez, I'm sorry.
On the issue on Chestnut, the Neighborhood Committee met Pioneer Valley, and it's in the radar when it comes to assessing how we're gonna go about it. So we had the meeting last week with Pioneer Valley and the Neighborhood Council, and they were discussing the same matter. So it's in the works, so it's been acknowledged as the issue when it comes to the... So that's the update from my board. Thank you.
Counselor Bruce? Counselor Bruce, floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, Chris, just a quick question. Do we have anything on the books for Breckwood Boulevard, that intersection down there?
Yeah, Breckwood is, was actually on the paving program for last year, last year, starting in July. We did a bunch of sidewalk work and we did some utility work out there. But we, I think the date is like May first, we're gonna be starting there, because the gas company, as a matter of fact, it's one of the petitions in front of us tonight. The gas company's gotta finish some work, but that whole stretch of Breckwood from Wilbraham Road to Boston Road is going to be done this spring.
All right. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it.
And just for everybody's purposes, we are also doing Island Pond Road and finishing up West Columbus Avenue.
Tim, did you have any question?
No, I'm all set. Thanks, Melvin.
Okay. Chris, would it be appropriate for you to create a list or anticipated list of what the upcoming projects are, so that you can share that to the council? I'm sure that would save a little time during the meeting if everybody knows that they are going to get a list of it, and you won't bombard people calling out the streets of their own personal interest or the interest of neighborhood.
The, the list was in the packet, but I can see if I can make some copies of it.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Bruce, you're all set, correct? Yes. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, here comes the whale. Free cash. Item number seven, transfer certified free cash to opioid settlement fund in the amount of one million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. This was referred back to committee. And it was, I believe, back in December, former Counselor Hertz had asked about specific uses of the opioid grant. And this motion was sent to committee for, and so I believe Kathy Bono, if you could, or Steve, somebody could actually... Are you prepared to kind of give us some more details about the anticipated use of these funds?
Sure, I can, I can speak to that, counselor.
All right, thank you, Lindsay.
Sure. So you're right. We did bring this to council back in December. Since then, the law changed, and now opioid settlement funds coming in from the state actually are directed directly to the opioid fund and available for expenditure. FY twenty-three, the funds that came in, the law hadn't changed yet. So as you all know, we had to charge them to the general fund. Having gone through free cash, we do want to appropriate this money that was supposed to be in an opioid account from free cash back to the opioid account, which we currently have open. We currently have funds in there from FY twenty-four. There are specific uses outlined by the state that we can use these funds for. There are seven categories. It's multiple pages long. I'm happy to forward you all that, so you know exactly what we are able to use those funds for. As far as an actual budget that outlines funding for the entire usage of the money we have now, we don't have that yet. So we don't have a plan in place for how we're gonna use all of the money right now. That is gonna be a meeting that has to go, you know, be set up with Kathy, Public Safety, HHS. So that's gonna take a while to determine exactly what we're gonna be using the funds for. This is simply us asking to move the money from free cash over to the opioid fund, so we have it available to spend when the time comes.
Is it appropriate to ask the seven categories, just the general title of the categories?
Yeah. So just bear with me while I go through the document. So opioid use disorder treatment, support people in treatment and recovery, connections to care, harm reduction, addressing the needs of criminal justice-involved persons, supporting pregnant or parenting women and their families, including babies with neonatal abstinence syndrome, and preventing misuse of opioids and implementing prevention education.
Thank you. I, I apologize. I'm not exact... I believe Counsel Whitfield was head or hand up first.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'm glad this is back on the agenda, because I've been getting so many questions about the opioid funds, because there's so many lives still being lost. There's a lot going on. And I think when we were in that city council meeting, I did speak to gun violence and using some of the opioid funds to mitigate some of what's going on. Clearly, we need it with the shooting going on in the school just today. We need to be creative. But I also go to the CARE Coalition, who is kind of like overseeing how these funds can be used. And I go to their meetings, and they said you can be like really creative on how these funds are spent. However, they did strongly recommend that there's community involvement. And I believe at one on how the funds are spent. So I want to know if there's any type of plan to have community involvement. In addition, I think that more than just the city hall staff should be determining how these funds are spent. Like, it definitely should be a city council on there. It definitely should have some folks representing different areas of the city of Springfield on the committee determining how these funds should be spent. I know that there are some funds that got to reimburse a truck or van that was bought for HHS and some paraphernalia that was spent for the fire department. I think that's about four hundred thousand. But outside of that, Lindsay, you said some of the funds are accounted for. The ones that are accounted for, can you tell us what they are?
So all the funds are accounted for. We've received two hundred and sixty-five thousand in FY twenty-four. None of it has been spent yet. And then we have this additional one point five million that we're trying to move from free cash over to the opioid account, so it's available for spending. What we don't want to happen, and we're, I think, I mean, I think we all agree that we're happy to have additional conversations about this. Our concern from a finance perspective is just getting it into the opioid fund before the end of the year. So that's really why we wanted to bring this back and have this discussion. I don't know that I have all the answers to the questions you're looking for today, but our concern is that this doesn't flow back through free cash again.
No, I understand your concern. My concern is how money has been spent in the past without community involvement and without input from outside, folks outside of City Hall. That doesn't feel right to me. But you said some of the money, we don't know how all the money would be spent, but you have a list of some of how some of the money is being spent. What are the some?
Four hundred thousand that we talked, that I talked previously.
Okay. Oh, that's it. So nothing, nothing in addition to that?
There, that I'm aware of, there's been no additional conversations that I've been a part of.
Okay, because we were in a different meeting with Commissioner Colton Helen, and she said the community would definitely be involved in some surveys and things like that are going out, but it needs to be more than that. It needs to be real, intentional conversations with the community, with a city council representative or two, really going through how we see the community and have the community voices right at the table. So I'm just gonna say that for the record. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Counsel, Counselor Gobain?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Lindsay, did the money, the opioid money that came in before, and it went into the general fund, did that go into free cash? And that's why we're transferring it now to... Okay. And then, and along the same lines of Counsel Whitfield's question, who's managing that money? Is that the Health and Human Services Department?
So that still has to be determined. Like I said, I haven't been involved in any conversations. There may be conversations happening. I haven't been involved personally yet. But that does, we do have to, and I was talking to Kathy, we do have to talk to Helen and determine, because there's reporting required as well through the state annually, so we have to determine all of that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And I guess just one last point to reiterate what Counsel Whitfield said about the community involvement. Everybody probably knows that I lost my son to an opiate overdose in two thousand and twenty-two. So this is a topic that's really close to my heart, and I want to make sure that we do everything we can to prevent, you know, more overdose doses. And I'm really glad that one of the categories is for prevention, because that's something that I don't think that we do enough of to prevent people from becoming addicted to opiates in the first place. So I'm excited that that is one of the categories. And I would like to, you know, hear of community involvement, you know, in the discussions on how we are going to spend this money. Thank you, Lindsay, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Perez?
Yeah, is this is the same monies of the three percent from the cannabis that we discussed, or some different allocations of money? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the information.
Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lindsay, good afternoon. This is a revolving fund, correct? We're gonna be getting the same amount every year?
It's, it's not a revolving fund, but it's a fund that will continue to get opioid funding through the state, yes.
And how, how is the amount going to be determined, do you know?
It's based on a percentage. It's a formula that the state has sent out to communities, and it's based on the settlements that the state gets.
Okay. And why is it important that we do this before the end of the year?
Because if we don't do it before the end of the year, this money is gonna go back through the free cash process. There's always a possibility that this money, somehow there's a deficit in a fund. This money isn't available to move to, to the opioid fund. So we just want to move it in. We think it's the right thing to do. That's what the funding was intended for. We just want to move it over there.
I understand. Now, let's see. What you're saying makes sense to me. However, I am still very uncomfortable with the original idea of buying tax trucks with this opioid settlement money, one point five million dollars. And that was the reason why it came to committee. I remember last year, myself and Counsel Whitfield questioned it. I believe Counsel Hertz at the time, too. And, but let me just place devil advocate here for a second. We transfer the money. What guarantees do we have the money is not gonna be spent before the parameters of the community input it's heard?
Well, there's, like I said, there's certain funding that the state has outlined that we're able to use it for, and we have to report annually to the state, so we're gonna be held to that standard.
And that's gonna be annual review?
I'm sorry.
Is there gonna be an annual review, the, the, the process?
As of right now, the reporting is annual, yes.
Okay, I do believe, Ms. Chair. I believe Counsel Allen may show me.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Counsel Davila. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I can't seem to hit the yellow arrow, so whenever it's the right time, I have a couple things to say on it.
Oh, okay. I thought you were gonna check me on the monitor. So, so we have to do this by the end of the year, so it's imperative that we do it today, correct?
Right. It's not imperative we do it today. I just want, we just wanted to bring it back for discussion, so we can move forward.
Got you. All right. I'll take you, Lindsay. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Counsel Allen, can we beg your patience? The understanding I have from my colleagues to my left is that all of the arrows in Ireland are green. Counsel Walsh, followed by Counsel Allen.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm not sensing that there's a real urgency. You said there are a lot of things to be announced, because I think Counsel Davila made a good point. We would like to see community involvement. We'd like to see council involvement. Once the money's moved, there's really no leverage to do that. So I...
Yeah, our urgency, counselor, is, you know, by May, early June, whatever meeting's coming up, at least by then. Obviously, sooner, better for us, because then it's off our plate. However, I understand if you want to have additional conversations, our urgency is just that it's, you know, by the end of the fiscal year.
Well, I would feel more comfortable if some of these points that have been made by my colleagues were actually incorporated into this process before we transfer the money. That's my sense. I don't know about the rest of the committee or how other people feel.
Counsel Allen?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we, we, we all acknowledge the things that have just been said about community involvement and Lindsay's concerns about not making sure we do this by the end of the year. I'm just gonna suggest that this be, you know, one approach would be this be an initiative of the Finance Committee, where Finance Committee would work with the CFO, Kathy, with Helen, with maybe a couple other counselors or whatever, because it doesn't sound like anybody's really necessarily putting a process together. We all acknowledge that there isn't a process, and we're all concerned about what that process might be. So I think there should be an initiative. I offer it of the Finance Committee, it's a finance item, to put a process together, to actually have an initiative to figure that out with the right members of, of the Finance Department and Helen Colton Harris and whomever else. Maybe the Health Committee, you know, Brian Santinella was chair of that, I believe. So it doesn't seem like it's urgent to pass it tonight, but I think it is kind of, maybe not urgent, but necessary to get, to get some plan put together for how we're gonna be able to answer those questions. So I would offer it as a, as an initiative of the Finance Committee going forward.
Counsel Gobain, followed by Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So right now, what we're trying to do is transfer the money from free cash to the opioid fund. Now, once it's in there, how is it going to be spent? Does it have to come through the coun- through the council for approval? Um, or if it's, once it's in there, it's in there, and whoever's doing whatever with it can do whatever they want. Is that? Just clarification.
It will have to go back to City Council, so it will just be like any other appropriation. Um, and as it stands going forward, that these fundings, the, the, I'm sorry, these funds do go directly into the fund. Um, obviously, you know, we have restrictions based on what the state has outlined, but yeah, it's just like any other appropriation. Um, we would just spend it from that account.
Okay, so I guess my, I guess I agree with, uh, Council Walsh that in that case, then I think we should come up with a process prior to transferring it over there. However, I do want to make sure that we get it transferred over there so that in the following year, we can, you know, um, allocate the funds where I think we, maybe as a body with the community's input, um, and uh Commissioner Colton Harris's input, um, can, you know, decide where and how the money is going to be spent. Um, so that's my opinion, I guess. Thank you. I agree with Council Allen too, that maybe this commi- this uh, this body could be, um, you know, initiating that maybe planning process. Thank you.
Council Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna say I agree with, um, the comments of making sure there's a process. You know, we've seen it happen in the past. Once the money is transferred, we've seen it with ARPA. Um, things just start happening with the funds, and it doesn't necessarily benefit the individuals um that need it the most, that greatly are suffering um from the opioid crisis. Um, Council Gobain, are you on the Finance Subcommittee?
I think so. Am I Council Allen?
No, it, it's, uh, it's Council Edward's who's running the meeting, and Council Delgado, I believe. You're certainly welcome to be part of, part of the process. Uh, no initiative to, to try to rush it through the Finance Committee as much as just to establish a process. And the things we normally approve, the orders that come through, normally are, are from one department that's spending money in their department, in their previously approved budget, or this or that. And then Finance, uh, you know, provides the, you know, the seal of approval or whatever on it. This is different. This is across departments. This is includes Finance and includes Health and Human Services. It might, it might include, you know, Public Safety of, I don't know, some other, some other department. So I think we need to establish who really makes the decision on this money. Um, you know, who, what's the approval process? If, if someone comes into buy, you know, that, that's what I'm suggesting.
Thank you. I, I wanna um volunteer to be on it, but only because I've seen these processes happen, especially with the marijuana, and I'm gonna say this is not unusual. We get lumped some of the money, and then they're spent the way that the administration wants, because there's not enough votes on the planning team. It's mostly all administrat- administration folks, and the process is skewed. It was skewed with ARPA, it was skewed with marijuana, and this is a real need. There are people that really need it. There are other programs that could help besides the same old players that get the funding all the time. We need to look outside of those players and make sure that other organizations and mental health and gun violence and opioids um get this funding also, so we can have a larger impact than the same old players that get it all the time. And so I can't support it being transferred without a process in place to make sure that this money is spent equitably and it is a fair process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Lindsay, since there is no, I, I, I mean, I'm feeling, since there, it, what I gathered from what you said, there's no urgency for the transfer to be made immediately. Would it be appropriate, or would it be handicapping the, uh, the expenditure of these funds if a, uh, if there was a creation of a, with the cooperation Helen uh and Public Safety as well, because the issues we're talking about, type of costs of public health, public safety and finance? So, would it be appropriate to possibly for this, uh, for us to table this item and then create an opportu- Steve, I see you over there. Okay, stop, please. You can.
Why can't I just leave it in committee?
Uh, that's what I'm saying. Can, not table, yeah, but just leave it in committee. What I'm sug- what I'm trying to suggest, and I, I, you will get a chance to speak, okay? I, the members of the council first, then I'll take a listen to what you have to say. My thought is, is that, is it a possibility we just leave this in committee in terms of the transfer? What I'm hearing from, it was being echoed in my mind from the counselors is that they need public comment, and they want to be at the table to have a conversation about how the money gets expended. I know there's certain seven categories, and state has put parameters on it. Is it appropriate for there to be a public meeting or the organization of a public meeting to allow for people in the public to come and speak and listen to all of the different departments, all counselors who are interested in attending, be able to work with the administration and go over what the parameters are by the state, and then how that fits into whatever purpose people who are in presence vision of how the money should be expended? Is that something that would work for Kathy, the CAFO, if Lindsay is, is the deputy?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we do it quite often with CDVG funds, where we fund different departments. We get input from the community, and then departments put in their requests, and then we review their requests. So I think if we called in the departments, we, we find out which departments uh would be interested in these funds and have programs for these funds, and call them all into the room, and we all put a plan together with public input. I, I don't, I, I don't see a problem with that. We kind of, we called it back because it was sent to committee in December, and then no committee um hearings or meetings were held, so we felt like we had to bring it back to put it in the forefront again and say, you know, we, we need to move forward with these funds.
Well, I believe on, on this call right today, we have Council Allen's the chair of the Finance Committee. Council Davila is the chair of a committee. I'm sure Counselor Santinella, who's not here, would be happy to host a meeting as well, a joint meeting. But the bottom line is, it sounds like there should be a, uh, a, well-advertised, large gathering of public co- uh, people, both elected and common citizens coming together to be able to listen and put all the ideals on the table. And then from that point, they can also hear what the seven categories of expenditure are based by what the state says, uh, just to have a clearer understanding of what agencies outside, uh, agencies that might be qualified to be able to accept money and what they, whatever is necessary, it could be all be brought into the table, and wants all that information. And then it, as the council accept, it, the council, also the body, being required, recognizing that there is a timeframe for this money to be transferred, that we do this in that timely manner, so that the money can be transferred in plenty of time for it to be moved uh out of free cash. Does that sound appropriate? And if that's okay, then I may have, um, been along with the, but that's, my intention is to make this, that, that's what I'd like to put on the table, and I'd like to hear comments from my colleagues, as that's, if that's the thing is appropriate.
Sounds like a good.
Council Perez?
Yeah, so, uh, for purpose of understanding, so we will have this process in place, so it has to be as soon as possible. Um, but Lindsay, I was gonna say, looking at the state outlines, one of the standards uh have you seen in it? Because I have seen it, because we run some state um opio- uh program, is community involvement. Um, um, is, is that a fact when, in the outline?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, happened to me.
Um. So it doesn't necessarily say that that's a requirement, um, when it says, because I'm looking at the specific municipal use of abatement funds. It, it, it doesn't have community involvement or, you know, um, anything like that as a requirement. It's not to say it's something that we wouldn't do, but just that's not something that, um, the state is holding us to making us do that.
Thank you.
But, I, I'm gonna go back, Council Whitfield, and Tim, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, I'll come again, one more comment.
Okay, uh, Council Whitfield?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I have been attending the, um, meetings regarding the opioid funds. And while the state always says it's not required, it's strongly approved to have community involvement. The question is asked at every meeting, and they always say the exact same thing. So it is, it is strongly approved.
Okay. All right, uh, Tim?
Yeah, I would just say that whether it's a state requirement or not, we can make it a Springfield requirement. Uh, that could be part of the process, that we figure out how to engage the community and who to engage. So I, if that's, it's coming out loud and clear here in this meeting, that, that that's necessary in order to make sure that these fu- funds are ultimately spent in the right way. So I'm in favor of that, and it would help to facilitate that any way I can.
Okay. Um, then that, that's, uh, I, I think we're pretty much, Council Whitfield, you had anything else to add, or we all said?
Sorry, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't put my hand down.
That's okay. Um, I just, um, okay, that's, that's, uh, would be in a, I'm gonna, we have a guest who is eager to speak. So I'm going, you want to identify yourself, and you just, I'll give you a couple of minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good, uh, good evening, everyone.
It would help if you, I, uh, we can hear you better.
So, Stephen Hawley, I'm here as a resident, not as a board member of the McKnight Neighbor Council. Uh, only part of the story of this funding has been told. Uh, the money, this opioid money was actually made available after the then AG, Erie, now governor, had, was involved in a suit whereby something like two, uh, twenty-six billion with a B. Twenty-six billion dollar resolution with opioid distributors was basically approved to be paid to different communities. Five hundred million is earmarked for Massachusetts. Seven point five, no, seven point two million has been allocated to Springfield. That will be put in, starting, the positive, excuse me, back in twenty twenty-two and runs through twenty thirty-eight. The one, the, this whole discussion that is being taking place right now was ignited when the mayor, I, I believe it was the last official meeting of the City Council last year, which was chaired by President Lerman. Uh, when the proposal to transfer, I think it was four hundred and either twelve or four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the fund into the opioid was, uh, was, was requested. The city councillors didn't understand exactly what was happening, so Council Hurst recommended a motion which, Council, uh, no, I, I need to get some information, because you, you keep talking about, uh, either one point five million or the four hundred thousand dollars. That's not it. That's not the entire amount, and for people.
The only amount before, as far as the committee is concerned.
Yes, but it, it, it extends more than that, because.
We don't have access to any of that. On, we're, with, the purpose of this committee meeting is to discuss the transfer or the acceptance of that money that has been allocated. So whatever amount of money that's coming from the state is a broader conversation for a different audience.
I'll, I'll focus on that. That, uh, from my understanding, that four hundred and, what is it, twelve or twenty-five thousand dollars that's been actually transferred into opioid account, right? That is the mayor asking for reimbursement for equipping three vehicles, two tac units, which are operated by the fire department, and one bus, which I believe was purchased for HHS. Some of the funds of this four hundred plus thousand dollars was actually spent to equip all Springfield police officers with opioid-related equipment, mainly Narcon. So the mayor's saying, I spent the money, the city council approved, uh, approved, approved my, my request to spend this money. I spent it, now I'm coming back to ask for that money to be, to come back to, to the city. So that, that four hundred thousand plus, I believe that is what is actually being discussed right now. If I'm, if I'm incorrect, I stand corrected. If I'm incorrect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right. We have two more items. Is there any more questions or comments on this particular item? And if not, what I'm going to do is, when I do the report to committee, I'm gonna respectfully ask that this item stay in committee, and that the consensus of those in attendance tonight is that, um, the money needs to be transferred before May, but in interim time, that there needs to be public comment on the procedures and how the money is going to be spent, and at the appropriate time between now and May, once that meeting is had, and we will then revisit and bring it out of committee for transfer of the money, which is the intent of the order itself. Does that sound appropriate to everyone?
I think it's an excellent suggestion. I think we'll accomplish the goals everybody wants to reach.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item number eight is pegged access cable-related funds in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred nine dollars and seventy cents. Lindsay, is that you?
Yeah, so we've come to you, um, previously. This is the quarterly, um, access payment for public education and governmental uh, public access. Um, this comes to us, it's a payment made quarterly by Comcast. Um, we have an MOU in place with Focus Springfield, and this money is then appropriated to an account for the use of pegged access, um, distributed by Focus.
Any questions? Saying none for anyone. Council Gobain?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to try to raise my hand with the yellow button. Um, Lindsay, and I'm gonna ask this every time that this comes up, about the, um, translation services. Is this part of that or not yet?
You know what? That's a question for Steve. I do not know. Um, but I can certainly get that. And I'm sorry if you've asked that before. Um, I can certainly get that for you. I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, yeah, because I think the last time the peg, um, thing came up, I did ask about it, and I think, um, it, it's in the process. So I'm, I'm just gonna keep asking it until maybe it happens.
Okay.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on item A? Uh, final order is number nine, bills from prior year, Treasury Department. Is that you, Mr. Burns?
Actually, Mr. Lonergan.
I'm back.
I, I, my apologies. Mr. Steve Lonergan, the floor is yours.
Good, good afternoon, councilors. Uh, these are a couple, um, bills of prior year, uh, one for one ninety-five State Street for maintenance, uh, with our property manager, property management company. We didn't receive it in the, it's for June. We didn't receive it in the fiscal year it was intended for, so we're, we have to come before you and, uh, ask for authorization to pay for it. The bulk of it is for the Brink's armored car. Uh, believe it or not, some of these bills apparently went to Springfield, Illinois. And, uh, as a result, we did not receive them. As such, uh, when we did, we then went through the bureaucracy of Brink's to find out if we, you know, to verify everything. We did. All late fees have been waived, and we need to just pay the authorization, pay the bills. We are taking this out of our current year budget, so there'll be no free cash asked for to pay for them.
Any questions on this order? Only once, going twice?
I hope, yes.
Um, do we, Tim, Tim, do we need to have a recommendation or a vote on any of these items as a committee? Or did we just take this back to the committee to hold this?
Uh, we al- we always ask, so one of the three of us could make a motion, and then if somebody else agrees, then we have, you know, a quorum of, so it's you, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Delgado, I, is he in the meeting? I believe he is.
Yeah, yes, he's here.
Yeah, and, and me. So I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that, that we, uh, take an affirmative, um, that, you know, to, in favor, I'll make a motion in favor of the items that have been presented before us today.
All items except for seven, which we recommend to be, uh, contained in committee with the expectation they will host the meeting. Does that sound accurate?
That sounds accurate, yep. Thank you.
And second, and I'll second the way you added the, uh, the portion. Trust me, I'm stumbling to this.
Second the language.
You're doing great, Melvin. Appreciate it.
You guys can see, this is not my wheelhouse, but, uh, you're doing a great job. You guys can see, this is not my wheelhouse, but, uh, I'm doing a great job. My wife pays our bills, so I'm scared of finance. Uh, but my, my, appreciate you and, uh, all of you. My apologies if there's no other business properly brought before the council. And if, but at this time, I would also offer Steve, if you have any departing comments that are brief, uh, I'm happy to allow you to speak at this point.
Just going back to the op- opioid, I agree with the sentiments that the community must be involved with this. Because there are organizations out there that are, mutual organizations that are involved with this particular, uh, issue. And I think they need to be brought in so that they could present some of the ideas as to how this money could be spent. So community input is, should be mandatory, once thi- this fund is supposed, uh, agreed to be transferred. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, everyone. If there's no objections, I'd like to adjourn this meeting and thank everybody for their patience and their attendance. Uh, so you guys all at seven.